Okay, Alex.
Here.
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 Here. Here. And we do have a quorum. I need to get a motion to approve the meeting agenda if there's no changes.
I can make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we also need a motion to approve the minutes from March fourth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first up, we have this special event request from Fortville Farmers Market. Ben Eads.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, due to construction where the market had been held.
Due to construction where the market had been held?
My one.
Um, we're just not able to facilitate the market where it was for the past couple of years due to construction. So we're asking for approval to move it over to Landmark Park. Um, the parking spots between um, the church and the park utilized for this season. If that's okay.
The church was okay with that, too, I guess.
Yes, spoke with them this morning.
So you're gonna need electricity?
Shouldn't need electricity. There, there's not a lot of needs for it. It's just space to set up vendor tents is all it really is.
Do we need to worry about restrooms or anything?
Any question?
Sorry, I didn't read your request.
I did.
I did.
There we go. Okay, if nobody has any questions for Ben, we need to get a motion to approve the special event.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit request uh, to move the farmer's market this year to Landmark Park.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, thanks, Ben. Good luck.
Yeah, I hope you have a good, good summer. Okay, next we have Indy Sharks Baseball. Um.
Can I, can I pass this to the?
Oh.
Sure.
You guys can look through it. I'll explain who I am, why we're here and, and all that. My, my name's Jason Thelman and um, my in-laws are Fortville residents. They've been here forever. Um, and John A. Strikes of Fortville, he's with me, too, in my program and he's a Fortville resident or Mount Vernon District resident. We've got another coach with us that's a Mount Vernon District uh, resident also. Anyway, um, I got to know Heath with the Parks Department a little bit recently and um, you know, some teams were exploring renting fields out there um, in the park and I've been familiar with the park for years just with my in-laws being here. Um, I don't know if you guys know Ed Clark, uh, local guy, his father, his father coached out there forever and I think they put a sign up to, for the field with him and anyway, but my, my interest, when I start talking to Heath was like, hey, this building, what's going on with this building? Um, so I expressed interest to him um, and seeing if there's, if, if the building was being underused out there, would there be a way to rent the building out to run our program out of there? We, we, we have full-blown programming twelve months out of the year um, with travel baseball and, and training and lessons and coaches and I mean, it's, it's a pretty big deal. Um, right now, we have nineteen teams, um, probably around two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-five kids in the program right now. So that's just, you know, traffic. It's, it's people coming in and out every day, getting their work in. Um, again, we, we do a lot of indoor training. Our busiest months with that are, you know, the December through December through June, July, um, tapers off a little bit in the fall, but that's when we do a little bit more outside on fields and with, with training. Um, so yeah, I did, I just wanted to throw that, explore the option. Is, is there, would there be any interest in, in looking into this further where we could uh, set up shop and run our cages and put the turf down and, and just make that our home? Um, if there'd be interest, I, I would love to talk about it. If there's not, then I totally understand that. But, but we, we've rented warehouse spaces in the past. That's where we're, we're currently, I've, I've, I've been in this business for over twenty years and warehouse buildings is where we typically set up, but the, the unique thing out there was the parks and the fields that are right there that are, that are available for additional rentals with the teams. Um, so anyway, that's, that's who I am. That's why I'm here. I just wanted to kind of throw it out and explore it and answer any questions. If you have questions or if you don't have questions right now, we can, my, my number's on there. Feel free to reach out to me or, or Heath, then I've talked a little bit about this idea and he knows how to get ahold of me, but uh, I'd be happy to answer anything if there's anything at all.
I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around what it looks like. Um, I'm not a baseball. I did go to spring training this year, but I'm not a baseball fan really. Um, so if you want to utilize the community center, um, are you thinking mostly the gym?
The gym.
And would it be utilized a, all the time? Would other groups be able to still rent it or?
Yeah, the, the way we set up, it'd be pretty much all the time. We, we could make arrangements for other groups. It, it'd be hard to roll the turf up and remove the cage. The, the way we set up, it's pretty permanent or, you know, so it'd be hard to, like, if, if you're thinking, well, if it's baseball two days a week and then basketball two days a week, that, that'd be hard for us to do. We, we're, we go seven days a week with, with our training. So um, but we'd be open to local groups using it, community teams and individuals within the community. We'd be open to any ideas there, for sure. Um, but yeah, typically, we're, we're seven days a week, twelve months out of the year. Um, there's times either that's heavier and slower. Um, but we're in there all the time.
Okay. I know we have a group that's going in the Boys and Girls Club and I don't know, are they gonna ever use Need the Gym, Heath, or? Okay. Okay.
Okay. So is your train, you see your train, is it December through July only or do you guys do it twelve months out of the year?
We go twelve months a year. Yeah, it's, it's all the time. Mm-hmm.
You're also looking to use some of our diamonds as well?
Yeah, for sure. Uh-huh. Yeah, we have. In, in fact, I've even kind of visualized with those diamonds, if, if they're not being used, it sounds like the, the youth program is not out there anymore from my understanding. It's like, wow, that'd be, you know, we, we could probably fill those pretty easy with, with the number of teams we have and put some care into them also. I know Heath does a good job taking care of them, but, but when they're not being used regularly, it's, it's hard to take good care of them because they just gotta have, you need the traffic on them for a field to stay in tip-top shape. So I'd love to see even a way to improve those fields.
That'd be great. I'm, I'm assuming these kids are from the area.
They're from, you know, yeah, we, we've got a lot of Fishers, a lot of Lawrence, up to Pendleton, through the Mount Vernon area, too. We've got some of those kids. They're, they're kind of this northeast side of Indy is where they're from. Mm-hmm. So um, I don't, I don't know how much you know about the travel baseball and, and just the way it's taken off is kind of crazy. It's it, baseball's ventured away from communities now to where everybody plays on in a travel organization and that. My advice and has always been stay with your community as long as you can, but they're just, they're dying, you know, so. We started this ten years ago for one of my sons. His age group, that there were a bunch of kids that were ready to break away from that travel or the community program. So we started one team and then it just grew over time to, to nineteen teams without really intent for that. It just is very organic. Um, and again, even, even to this day, I'll, I'll tell people when they come and they want to form a team, I say, I'll ask them a lot of questions about their community program to make sure if, if they can salvage and stay there, I, I encourage that, but nobody wants to do that anymore. It's just the way it's turned. So we're, we're trying to provide, the difference with us, with other child programs is we're, we're trying to provide more development. Most of them are, hey, let's form a team. We're just gonna go sign up for all these tournaments. We're gonna play and that's really it. There's not a development component and that's why the indoor space is so important to us is because the development piece, um, players getting better. So. Anyway, but yeah, we do have all over, a lot of Fishers, a lot of Lawrence and everywhere in between. So.
Jason, how late in the evenings do those kids uh, normally go?
He's usually shut down between nine and ten o'clock.
Okay.
Most of, most of the time. We get some stragglers that stay in there a little bit late sometimes, but um, I, I, during my busy time, I'm, I'm in there doing lessons until ten o'clock, yeah. And mostly after school hours when school's in session, so three o'clock before they really start and, you know, um, when school's not in session, then we'll start in the morning and in the summertime, we'll, we'll get out there at nine AM and we'll run it through the day. So we're not in there so late in the evening.
And not all, not all nineteen teams are there at one time, I'm assuming?
No, no, it's all split up. Um, you know, the, the teams, they have like through the off-season time, which is like the December through, through March timeframe, they'll have one, one time slot a weekend. So all nineteen teams will get a time slot on the weekend and then a lot of them come in extra time during the week also just to get some extra work in. And then in addition to that, there's, there's uh, training sessions. So we'll do um, outside of their team time, we'll have some of the coaches, myself and John and some of the other guys. We'll run them through, we call it our arm strength program. Okay, they come in, they throw, they do med ball work, they do uh, things, things to help them improve uh, areas that the team doesn't need to worry about, if that makes sense. So when they're there with their team, they're doing, they're doing team activity. So a lot of those kids are making two or three appearances a week, if not three or four appearances a week um, when, when they show up. So they have their team time, then they have their outside training, which is with us. Kind of makes sense that.
No, yeah.
Some, some of these kids show up every day. I mean, there's some kids seven days a week and some of them are twice a week. Some of them are three times. Some of them once. It just depends.
We never had nothing like that when we were kids?
No, we didn't. It's one of those things I always dreamed of and, and you know, it's just kind of, it's, it's the way it is now.
Yeah.
It's all over the place now.
Where's your facility at now?
Right now, I'm in a, a facility just off of ninety-six between uh, between Allisonville and Keystone. So just uh, on the south end of ninety-sixth street there. So that's my temporary spot. I was in uh, had a facility in Noblesville for six years, had a facility in Fishers for a few years, kind of been in that area. And again, this one just kind of popped up and I thought, wow, man, see, let's look into this.
So you think your teams will be okay with the location based on where they're going now?
No doubt about it. Yep, yeah, they would be. Yeah, they'd be good with it.
How, how much, like, how, how often is the gym rented throughout the year, Heath? Like, how, how much would it be taking from like anyone else or? Yeah. Right.
But, I mean.
It's not a lot, right?
Their celebration, but um, it's not something that's consistent, right? It's not something that we can, we're trying to build that revenue, but it's getting fluid. Some years maybe stuff a lot, other years it may not be, but Monday to Friday. Now, I've got the fifty-four years, you know, the monthly training week. I mean, we're on Tuesday nights for maybe three hours. That's it. So. Again, the space, just kind of thinking out loud with this, the virus club is still room B is still for rent. That will still be available. Obviously, we still have the head start rooms in addition to um, in addition to what we're doing uh, as a rental facility in there. And I know I said something to you guys as far as council is just the Friday morning offices a bit, you know, on our end from, you know, rental facility standpoint, if that's something, you know, that would benefit the community in the long run, whether it be bringing in, you know, families from, you know, close but outside the area, or shops and businesses to, you know, traction in the park. So.
With, with that, I'll say that a lot, a lot of them, though, the kids will, mom and dad will drop the kid off for an hour and then they're killing time. So that whole Main Street shopping district there, they, they need something to do. They, they'd be over there doing something. Can't, can't promise you how much they're gonna spend, but they're probably gonna spend something over there.
Sure.
If that, if that is attractive, yeah, they're gonna do that.
I like the idea that we'll have movement in the park again and kids playing in the park and more visibility and activity. I like that idea. Um, and I like bringing visitors in to see our community. We're a great community and we can be very friendly at times and um, um, but I, I worry though, my, my only concern is that that's our only large space if the library wants to have a program or um, I mean, it's a gathering space that's big enough for, you know, activities and things like that. So that's my only concern, but it hasn't been utilized a lot. So um, maybe it's not in demand.
Like he said, it's probably fluid. He knows some, some years it might be there and some years it might not, but I mean, I think it's um, I think it could be nothing but a good thing for the town, especially for the park. You know, I'd like to see people playing all the time.
Yeah, I agree about more activity down there. You know, sometimes I'm jogging down there and I just see like a couple little kids wandering around. It's like, you know, there, there should be more going on.
There used to be. Yeah, yeah.
Does it mean Ed's gonna be over there?
Yeah.
He, I, I hope so. I think he'd be around, yeah. I'll, I'll make him. If that helps, I'll just tell him, hey, you've got to be here.
He's required, yeah.
He shows up out there and tries to take care of that field a little bit, I think, that has got his dad's sign up on. So yeah, he needs things to do. Yeah, we'll get him involved.
So yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. I mean, I don't know that any of us have anything negative to say about it. So I think it's something we should certainly entertain. Um, I don't know if you guys have discussed fee schedules and stuff, but that'll come later, but I think the interest is there.
Yeah.
I mean.
That's really all we're trying to do tonight is just gauge interest. If there's interest, I say, let's keep talking about it.
Yeah, I think so.
There's not, that's okay. But, but yeah, I, let's, let's explore it. Cause I'm, I'm in that looking mode. I, my current spot I've got kind of until I need to be out, I've got it through the summer pretty much or midsummer.
Sure.
Um, but, but I'm ready. I'll be ready whenever, if, if you guys are ready.
We beat you guys a couple of weekends ago in a tournament, the championship. I coached, I coached for the Indiana Bandits.
Okay, those kids that come see me. Everywhere they come and they, they work out with us. Okay. I used to do some work with the Vanas guys years ago, back when, another Fortville guy, uh, Jeff Montgomery, he used to coach out there with them years ago. And uh, he had me come work with his pitchers. I got to know a lot of those kids over there.
I helped on the fourteen U, the fourteen U white team.
Okay, fourteen, okay. So you played, uh, you remember the coach, was it Batter Shields team? You know, okay. We've got three fourteen U teams out there. So, cool, good. I'll make sure to tell them. They better step it up.
Well, thanks for.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Jason. Appreciate it.
If you guys.
I'm sure we'll have some more questions.
Yeah.
Call me, text me.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Kenny Cross, Fortville's MS four coordinator to present the revised Stormwater Technical Standards and Management.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Yeah, so with the uh, new general permit for item, uh, they require us to uh, update our technical standards and our ordinances. So uh, last year when we hired uh, Commonwealth, uh, they bring, bringing us up to speed. So I just uh, come here to have you guys read it and go over it and then um, hopefully we can get those approved and get them in order. That way I can continue to do my job. So. I think we have until uh, July, the first of July to get it approved and in motion. So. And I think Adam has a copy of all of that stuff that you can, on his computer, or I can get it sent to you guys. I don't. Oh, you guys do? Okay, so.
I, I kind of have one question on um, when it comes to stormwater quality management of the post-construction then after, are we gonna have to hire somebody or do we already have somebody on site that already knows how to uh, for the construction sites?
I mean, I work.
Is there, is there gonna be extra training?
I mean, I, I go to training every year. I work hand-in-hand with the county right now. So, and I think we're gonna continue to do that.
Okay. Does it require any certification training on the job sites? You know what I'm talking about?
I mean, and I'm, yeah, they sent me to get certified. So I, I'm in certified inspectors.
Okay. Pardon me? No. Okay. All right, thank you.
I also have a Andrew here with us tonight. You guys got any additional questions you can help advise him?
Just get this up.
So you just need our approval then to, to make the adjustments on the standards?
Yeah. Yeah, this, this would be for first reading only tonight. Um, also, the other thing that we did too was, um, we did send the document. Um, we picked three different engineers that have done a lot of work in Fortville um, in one capacity or another um, to get their feedback on it uh, as stakeholders, uh, people who are very familiar with the ordinance and um, the pros and cons of having different regulations within it. Uh, because the ordinance is based on a template that I think Purdue put together in a, in association with Christopher Burke Engineering. Um, so they provided a, a, two out of the three got back to us and provided some good technical comments. Um, it's not gonna change the um, intent of anything that you see here tonight, but um, it'll only make that document better. So the idea is that it would be perfected when it comes back to you all uh, for the April first meeting.
So do we need a motion to approve the first reading? Yeah, I, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of, what's the ordinance number?
Be three A. Two, two thousand twenty-three dash three A.
Five four.
Twenty-four.
It has a twenty-four dash three A. Yeah. For the stormwater management ordinance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Okay. Next up, we have a uh, to consider first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash three B, a rezone of approximately thirty-eight acres from a destrial L two planned unit development for Mercho Loth, Mercho Loth. Public hearing will take place in the planning commission uh, Tuesday, March twenty-sixth for this as well at six thirty. Adam?
All right. So for this item, this is just the introductory reading um, of the rezone of this project that would contain uh, two hundred four apartments as well as uh, multiple light industrial buildings on the east side of the project. Um, the plan commission will fully vet the proposal and that's when the uh, public would have a formal opportunity to speak on it, express any of their questions or concerns. Excuse me. So tonight, um, I know the, the, you've had the opportunity to look at the concept plan and the planned unit development document itself. So certainly if there are any comments um, that you have on the project that you'd like to see um, adjusted in it now is the, the time to get those on the record. Representatives from uh, Loth and the land use attorney are here as well. And then lastly, um, we did have um, a neighborhood meeting on the project last week. Um, really, the reason for that is it, it, it's a pretty important um, piece of ground geographically to the old town area of Fortville. So um, certainly it's important that a lot of people that live nearby had an opportunity to really uh, look at things and, and comment as necessary. And we did have a, I'd say a pretty good turnout at that meeting. Um, so with that, if you have any uh, comments, we'd be more than happy to hear those. Thank you.
So are we just firing off questions now?
Do you, do you guys have anything that you want to come up and say anything? You got anything to? Oh, well, not you. I talked to the builder. We'll get you in a minute. Yeah, we'll get you in a minute. Yeah.
Brian House, partner at the law firm, Fritzkine Davis in Greenfield. I'll be very brief because uh, first of all, I think you've seen a lot of information. Um, and secondly, this is just the beginning of the process. Uh, everything that Adam said certainly holds true. Uh, at the community meeting, there were twenty-seven people present to begin with and another one came in before the meeting was concluded. We answered questions and so on. I think the thing to point out here, at least from my perspective legally, is, you know, currently the site's owned industrial. Um, I believe that the proposal for a PUD is probably a much more um, attractive land use for the project because you will transition from residential housing to multifamily housing and then to light industrial. Two things I think are very important that really are pluses to the project. Uh, number one, in two thousand twenty, Banning Engineering did a study that was quite comprehensive concerning the extension of Madison South, which really I think is an important thoroughfare for the community of Fortville. And this project gives that a good jumpstart because Madison South will essentially run through the center. Um, the second thing is there is already a committed user for one of the commercial buildings. That is M Power Electric, the respected electrical contractor that does work across the United States, and this will be their headquarters. So if you have other questions, uh, we can field those. With me is Mr. Ryan Thomas, a senior vice president of Loth. Loth has an extensive history of uh, project quality developments throughout Indiana and elsewhere. So we would appreciate your favorable consideration on first reading.
We'll stop the deal a little bit and just go down the road here. You got any questions?
Comments? I don't have any questions necessarily. One thing that I do like about this is the continuation of the grid taking um, coming through that. I like the separation of the housing and the light industrial on the other side. And I also like that some of the homes that are used to having space and, and farmland behind them will continue to have space with a dog park or the stormwater pond and thought that was nice to have that into consideration or considered while designing this. Um, I don't know what the units are gonna look like. Um, I think this is a really great opportunity um, to, to be able to have something unique and Fortville's a quirky little town and, and I love that you can drive down Broadway and there's a variety of different kinds of buildings. So um, I hope that's considered when you design. Um, that it doesn't look like something that's just over on Lawrence or someplace else, hopefully. That doesn't mean it's gonna look like that.
My question is, is, is the, I, I did see the, the, the Franklin, uh, the, the, the project that was in Franklin. I think that, those pictures were in our email. Um, i- is the proposal like exactly like that or is it, is it up for a little bit of uh, debate on, on what it can look like? I guess would be my question.
Yeah, it's. Discussion as far as what that architecture would look like. Um, there's a variety of things and following Adam's guidance that I think we'll work towards or work through with the planning commission. Um, as long or as many meetings as that takes, but uh, yes, definitely, definitely open for it. That was a, we have to include something.
Of course.
Um, and that's the most recent representative sample of a successful project that we at Loth have done. So that's why we included it.
There we go. There we go.
For now.
I like the project. Obviously, I like the industrial side, the buildings, the, the, the the drawings that you showed us. I really like the way they look. I like the, uh, the prospect of the tenant. They're good people. They've got, you know, their family start and that's the kind of stuff we want to put on this, on the Madison, South Madison anyway. The apartments, um, I know we need the rooftops. I know the county says we need the rooftops and I don't think it's a a bad location if it's done right. I don't want, I personally don't want to see a um, apartment complex. I'd like for it to look like it fits in the neighborhood some and um, I don't know if you're set on the number of buildings or the number of units. I know you obviously have to make a certain number, but I think that's things that can be considered and and maybe do not all three story due to do a combination of stuff to make it look a little bit more like the neighborhood. I like, I really like bringing the roads through. That's, I mean, I think that's something that needs to happen too. I like the um, the dog park and the other things that you've added here. I just, I would like to see a different layout and I definitely would like to see something original on those buildings, stone, brick, something really textured, something that that that's that's welcoming, you know, not something that's hard and just the typical apartment community.
Well, like I explained at the community meeting and Adam and Joe can attest to this, we've been at Loth, we've been working on this project since the fall of twenty nineteen. Unfortunately, we had a very patient land seller. Um, so we've been at it for almost five years and tricky part about this process, I don't need to explain it to you, but between what we think we can, what we can afford to build frankly, what the market will bear, what the opinions of council and or planning commission are, what Adam and and Joe for that matter would like to see. There's a lot of opinions and a lot of input and we arrive at something that hopefully we can all agree on in the middle that satisfies everybody's need and desire.
Well, you'd spoke to that you guys have a lot of data, but I haven't seen that yet and I want to see that. Just, just what the demand is. And like I said, we have a, a market rate facility that's not finished yet and we don't know how it's gonna fill and we have hopes that it will fill fast. But that's, that's stuff that everybody needs to know, I think, to to feel like it's uh, warranted and that we need it.
I'm glad you said that. So, um, these are market rate, um, they're not, uh, Lytech or, uh, any form of subsidized housing in any way. Um, they're market rate, um, which is how the information that Tony is alluding to is based on the market research that we have, which we have a lot of it. Um, we can back our way into what we think the market will bear because it's a market rate facility. Uh, so um, we'd be happy to share that information with you.
That's all I got.
Hey, good questions, Tony. So, um, um, I attended the, the meeting last week and I received a lot of, uh, feedback from people offline and also in response to a Facebook post that I had made. And so, um, with a lot of comments and questions, so I, I picked out just the high level ones that I think are consistent with the first reading. Although there are many other, you know, I, I think of them as high level questions. There's sort of medium level questions and there's sort of nitty gritty questions. And I'm putting the bottom two layers to the side for now, you know, it doesn't really matter as much, but uh, here are a few questions of a high level that I received from people around town. Uh, the first one is um, even though, you know, and I'm an engineer, so I like the look of extending a road. So, you know, I see it and I'm like, hey, it looks good to me. But I received the question of, um, what proof do we have that we need thirteen to be extended? Um, you know, you can say it's a good idea, but i- is there any? You know, were there complaints or accidents or things like that that are driving a need for that?
I, I guess I would state that.
Obviously, the leaders of the community felt it was important and fun to find it because your legislative study would probably cost a lot of money to study the issue. Uh, I'm not a traffic engineer. He's an engineer. I'm not. I work for lots of engineer. When I look at it, it makes sense to me that you're gonna move your traffic and give another option. To the extent, from my perspective as a former city councillor, you're, you've got a great downtown area and it's looking better every day. And so the, the trick, if you will, is to get the right traffic in the downtown area and the traffic that you don't necessarily want going through there, uh, away is this will give an, uh, an option for heavier traffic to divert and go to State Road nine for avoid downtown.
It makes like a business district, if you will.
Alright, as I said, I mean, it sounds good to say traffic goes through. I received the question and these are from people who have lived in Fortville for a long time and presumably they were around when the study was done, everything. It's just that I received the question. What is the evidence that there is a problem we're trying to solve and we're not just building things just for the sake of building them?
I don't know that's necessarily a problem that we're trying to solve. I would only add to what Brian said that, um, this is partially some of the direction we were given from the town, from town officials based on the twenty twenty study. And I'm not sure we're solving a problem. I think we're creating an opportunity, um, for further growth.
Sure, sure. And and so, you know, these are questions and also comments, first reading type discussion, right? Um, on the topic of, um, let's see here. Well, I guess, uh, on the topic of not solving a problem, but, uh, maybe also not creating a problem, uh, the next question that I got was how do we know that the light industrial, um, enterprises there won't introduce so many trucks that in introduces a log jam onto this thirteen extension? And how, and similarly, how do we also know that this isn't going to drive a lot of traffic onto Garden Street going toward Route nine? You know, it's gonna, how do we know that it's not gonna create externalities in terms of additional traffic?
We'd be happy, I mean, it, we'd be happy to have a additional traffic study done that outlines what the average daily, um, uh, counts are, um, what, uh, the impact will be to your current infrastructure, how we will change that with proposed infrastructure. Um, we, we'd be happy to do that. We do them frequently on nearly every project that we do to, to answer the very questions that you're asking.
That question was in a sense asked at M Power, who was here at the community meeting, um, representative of M Power, the owner and so on. Uh, this is their headquarters intended to be. So there's an anchor tenant on site taking up significant space within the industrial area. And because it's, their operations are diverse across the country, they mentioned several offices, so. And I worked with one of them. The main location doesn't have much car traffic at all. Uh, that might be some stories, some shop. Uh, and employees with cars and pickup trucks, but it, it's not like an in and out warehouse or anything like that. I, I honestly don't recall the number of trucks we mentioned, but it was a number per week, not per day.
Yeah, it was, he, he, uh, indicated it's not semi-traffic. Worst case, it's box truck vans and it was three to four per week.
Okay, um, thank you. Last question that I had here was, um, why are we specifically looking to rezone to a P U D? And not, for example, residential on the one side and industrial on the other side?
It's a good question. So the, Brian alluded to it briefly, the, the way the current, your current zoning is set up, you have your old town, single family in the, in the grid pattern. And you have this one parcel that's thirty-eight acres in between the single family and industrial. So in that span of thirteen hundred and twenty feet from one side to the other, we have to figure out a way to transition successfully between two very different land uses. So the only mechanism that we have in place or that, or that you have in place to facilitate multiple zoning classifications in the same um, zoning ordinance would be via P U D to allow us to have multiple uses. If we could go straight multifamily, but then you've got single family, a big chunk of multifamily, and then it goes to industrial, which is what frankly where we started. It's one of the layouts we did over the four to five year period and we felt like and, and with Adam's input, felt like that this was a much better option um, for us, for you as a town and and better transition in land use.
And the, the whole notion with planned unit development is just what the title of the vision is, that there's greater planning and flexibility and also creativity brought to the project overall.
I might confer more with, um, with Adam here or, you know, separately, but, um, but my understanding is that P U Ds involve HOAs and and they're, they're considered to be self-contained and it kind of sounds like something that turns that little chunk into something that we don't really have much insight into once we hand it over that way. And that's also what I've heard from other town residents.
Aware, you can correct me if I'm wrong here.
There's no requirement in an HOA that the apartments would be under the part management or management company law, no doubt. With the commercial, the desperately could have an HOA for that area. I've seen that. But generally, they're only gonna be dealing with it through such a maintenance common area.
And I'm not suggesting it would be required. I, I, I certainly wouldn't want that to be required. I'm just saying what I've read about because I said, what's a P U D? And I had to go read about it, but, you know, but that, but that's what I mean. Naturally, there are a lot of questions about that. When you start to read about things that are self-contained and so forth, you start to wonder what are we giving up by, by classifying it that way? And and I think I just have a little bit more to learn about that, so I'll go, I'll go do that.
The, the biggest discussion, one of the largest discussions we had and probably the largest line item that would even be considered about being maintained in via P U D would be the roads. So we've had a lot of conversations with Joe in particular and Adam um, on whether the roads are public versus private, whether or not that's the, to your point, whether or not that's the association burden to maintain, plow snow, fill potholes, that sort of thing, or whether or not it's a town responsibility.
Yeah, yeah, good to know. Alright, well, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question. Sorry.
Yeah, sure, please.
With the, with the light industrial, is it, uh, is it companies that are moving to here with already employees or is this gonna create any jobs in the town? Is it?
So M Power as an example, because they were at our community hearing, um, they are, um, in Marion County now and will be, uh, transporting eighty jobs from Marion County to, uh, Hancock County to the town.
Okay, yes. So it's not creating, that part of it isn't, the, the other one might, you know, right?
Yeah, very well could, yes.
And I believe, aren't, don't they live in Greenfield and have several employees that live in the area?
Employees that live in this area, Hancock County.
They're in Lawrence, right at the edge of the county, so.
It, M Power is owned by a gentleman named Brian Henske. What it's worth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, guys. Um, we're gonna go ahead and do public comment on this, so anybody that would like to speak. Jim, you can come on up. Just tell us your name when you get up here.
Yes, I'm Jim Anderson. I live at five one seven Swan Drive. I, I just have one question. What, uh, how will the, uh, how will the infrastructure and road extension be paid for? Is the developer gonna pay for those expenses? Is it going to be financed with TIF financing or what is the, uh, what is the plan?
Right, that's fine, yeah.
So to answer, um, I'm sorry, what was your name, Jim?
Yeah, yeah.
To answer Jim's question, um, so the town also at the same time, or around the same time that they commissioned the study in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one by Banning, um, they also put a TIF in place to answer his question, tax increment financing. I'm sure you all are familiar with it. So, uh, we are the first development to utilize that TIF that was approved in twenty fifteen, I believe, twenty sixteen, around in there. Um, so, uh, yes, we will be using TIF dollars to pay for the roads. Um, and a small amount of additional infrastructure, but that is the plan.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. What'd you say?
I said, thanks, Jim.
Yep. Alright.
Like you want to say something.
Nope, he does. Okay, well, go ahead. Feel free.
I'm a recent addition to the town. My name's John Gay, uh, on some property over on um, Stott State, whatever you want to call it.
Stat, Stat Street?
That, whatever.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm very concerned about the idea of doing this as a planned unit development. It seems to me that the whole thing can be done by rezoning and you keep more control. I have a lot of experience with the planned unit development. Do not like them. You do lose control. It's much easier for them to do within the planned unit development, um, make changes, um, they don't come before the boards. I, I just see no reason, including the streets. Uh, you can require the streets to be done in this, uh, zoning environment without having a planned unit development. I would hope you look into that very seriously, um. And I suspect it's probably best for me to save the rest of my comments for another time when we can, uh, address it more fully.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, you want to address that?
You, you want, yeah, I was gonna say, what, what are the pros and cons for P U D as you see it and for the town?
Well, um, first, the reason that a P U D was looked at for this type of project is first the size, which in Fortville's, um, standards, it's a pretty good sized parcel for our community. Um, secondly, P U Ds, I would argue, actually give the council more flexibility than straight zoning because you can add whatever you'd like to add as part of that unique zoning ordinance. And so it also, the P U D also provides for um, a greater level of certainty as to what the developer will build. So for, if something's straight zoned, they don't necessarily have to provide a concept plan. They don't necessarily have to provide any, um, architectural elevation, so what I think is, um, really important, frankly, for any planned unit development and, and I've been dealing with P U Ds for the last twenty years everywhere I've worked and um, frankly, the, the con has been in the past that, um, that staff and elected officials, um, haven't been willing to um, be firm in terms of having good standards. And frankly, in other communities, I think the developers have used those as ways to water down the zoning ordinance, but I would argue that this is not the case here. I think we're using the P U D in the way that it was always meant to be used in that you're having higher standards um, than you would otherwise have. Lastly, I would say um, one specific example of why a P U D can work as opposed to straight zoning. So in the zoning ordinance, we allow vinyl siding, um, townwide. And the reason that we do that is if, if folks in the downtown area have vinyl siding on their home, they just want to make repairs, they should have the, the council said in the past, and we agree of course, is they should have the ability to do that. Um, but if, if you went straight zoning, then there'd be no, no requirement necessarily for fiber cement siding or anything higher than that. So I think at the end of the day, it's just really important that, um, the council um, be comfortable with the, uh, the project that's set forth and, and that you think it has high standards that are, um, fitting of our community.
Um, Adam, may I ask, do we have any other P U Ds in town already?
We do, yeah. We have, um, Park Creek is a P U D, um, Ridgeview West. That recent apartment complex is a P U D, Madison Lofts, um, Windstone was a P U D, although that was done um, for my time, so I can't speak too much to that, but, and then, um, uh, buyer's property, Mount Vernon North, and then the last one I can think of is, um, Northwest Fortville. Yeah, so we, we do have quite a few of them.
We have a great planning commission too, so they do a good job. They're pretty.
For sure.
Um, I think you can feel comfortable in knowing that they'll be looking at they'll down to the details. I mean, they're really good about that, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I feel, I feel comfortable, I, I feel comfortable approving it and passing it on to them and let, let's see what they could do with it, so.
Paying off for just the same. Adam hit the nail on the head that I'm oftentimes in Brian's seat out in communities on the other side and working with developers and working on P U Ds. And there's a difference among communities. Some are less firm, some, you know, are really, really firm. And it's in the details and making sure that some of the comments that the council's made tonight and the public's made tonight, um, and that we'll hear at the public hearing, the plan commission, that those concerns and what the council and community would like to see this development look like, if those are incorporated um, into the P U D ordinance, and that's the process we're in. And we've done it in the past and I can't imagine it would be any different.
I agree. Is there gonna be an onsite manager or, um, just like a rental office that is, has certain hours?
Sure, yeah. We, um, we at Loth have, uh, about three thousand units, actually just a shade less than that. Sure, yeah. We, we at Lofts have about 3,000 units, actually just a shade less than that, spread out in about 15 communities. So each of them will have a traditional leasing office. They're not there 24/7, but all of our apartment communities or multifamily projects are managed out of our carving office.
Okay, so somebody has eyes on it every day?
Yes. Yeah.
I think there's maybe one more question.
More questions? Comments?
I've got one online.
Oh. Who's online?
Hear me?
Yeah, who is it?
My name's Josh Schmokers. I live east of town on 1,000 North, so I'm not technically a Fortville resident, but wanted to offer a few thoughts. I guess one, in comparing, comparing the proposed plan to the South Madison master plan that was done a few years ago, it appears that there's a bunch of parking fronting the boulevard, which kind of goes against the master plan. I think the idea of that master plan was, it was always a pedestrian focused kind of corridor with multi-use trails along it and a more beautiful kind of boulevard than a parking, a front loaded parking boulevard. So I would, I would want that to be taken into consideration because it will set a precedent for everything else that continues to the south. One other thought, there's in the layout, the land or the roads sort of have a dead end that head toward the east, as if maybe there's going to be an expansion toward the east for some additional industrial area. I would, I would argue that that orientation should be rethought so that that's not the, you know, the second place development happens. It should really happen within the TIP district as it heads further south. And then the third item that kind of caught my eye was, I know that there's maybe one prospective tenant for the industrial use. The plan sort of shows a large warehouse type building, which with what appears to be a bunch of semi-loading docks to the rear or to the east and parking to the west. Again, if we're gonna depict it that way, I think we have to assume that that's a possibility and to understand what that means to traffic, where that traffic is coming and going from.
Thank you.
So, in response.
Well, I take the street.
Yep.
First of all, the landlord or that parcel was here community, and his view, he had two concerns. Number one, I don't have any plans to develop this, but I tend to. And number two, he has a brain issue, so. With all due respect, planning department said there should be a provision for access to the.
Yes.
So that was. Ryan can elaborate on this, but it is conceptual. It's currently zoned industrial. You could do anything and everything on these concept plans tomorrow by just pulling permits, structure. The anchor tenor is a low traffic tenant, not loading docks, not et cetera, but it's a representation of what could occur in the dust was up. And last but not least, I think we're perfectly willing to discuss rearrangements and orientation of parking, which want to push parking to the center of the multifamily rather than to the exterior. And if I say anything that Ryan disagrees, please drop.
I agree with everything he does.
I didn't see any loading dock doors on here, but I see two back here in the back, but that's pretty traditional.
He's correct, but the, so on the industrial buildings on the west side is traditional vehicular parking. On the backside is the option for loading docks. So whether or not those are drive-in docks, whether or not those are what we call dock high, like in a traditional warehouse, we don't know yet. The, the way the parking was oriented in the multifamily, we're certainly willing to, to discuss that and make changes. We've worked pretty closely with Adam already on the way that the parking is laid out. But certainly that's a discussion point going forward. And like Brian said, it is just conceptual at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I like to comment quickly on the, both those comments that were raised. First, for the connection to the east, what I would recommend is that the, along the east property line, that right of way be provided so that if that road is extended, if there's a need to extend it in the future, it can be done, but not actually have the pavement go right to the edge of the property. So this way, if it stays agricultural for decades, then it's not like you have a stub street, but you'd have the legal right of way to be able to extend that stub if need be.
Sure.
So I think that would resolve that. And then secondly, on the, the parking layout and the question of the apartment complex, there was a lot of thought from a staff perspective that went back and forth on this. But what we advised on is we really wanted the center of, we wanted the center of the buildings where they're facing. They're facing a street, an internal street with parallel parking. And so that's where the front of those buildings are. Now, each building will have four sided architecture, so it's not as if you're looking at a blank wall along South Madison. But the idea is, again, very similar to a walkable environment where you have this main street that goes right through the center spine of the community. And then you have parking at the rear. And so because of the number of buildings that they wanted to have, that seemed to be the best way of achieving that walkability. So the idea would be, as you go through this area of town, it'd be like a new addition to our town rather than a suburban complex where buildings are just kind of haphazardly thrown together. But rather, you'll be able to look right down the center spine, so to speak, of this street, and it aligns with our city block system. So that was the thought process there.
And two, those sidewalks out there, face, there can be a berm there and trees and all that stuff too.
Exactly, and that, yes.
And that would be in between the sidewalk and the parking anyway.
It's gonna have an eight foot wide sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
On one of the sides, yeah.
Railwalks out.
Eight foot wide trial, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Gotta have the trees.
Yeah, we'll have plenty of trees. We have to.
Joe's a tree guy.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I had a question about the parking.
Okay, yes, looking for a motion to approve the first reading?
Oh, Brittany's got it.
Brittany, yep, come on up.
Brittany Layton, 1073 West Jade Drive. I'm just asking for clarification. I'm saving my comments and questions for the planning commission. You said that there's going to be a leasing office on site, but the 24 hour service is in Carmel? Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. Could be.
What's our last number?
Three B.
Three B? I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2024 dash three B.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Step one.
Thank you.
Thanks just for the planning commission meeting.
Okay, next up, we have a first reading for ordinance number 2024 dash three C. A rezone of approximately seven acres from commercial neighborhood and business one to industrial light at 712 West Broadway. And a public hearing will also take place on the 26th at the planning commission at 6:30.
All right, so for this particular request, first the petitioner has some handouts for you, you all.
It's different than what we said. Thank you. Don't miss this fair.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you.
One for me and one for Fritz.
Yeah.
All right, so for this particular project, this is at 712 West Broadway. And it is the property that is just west of the old Seals Ambulance Building that is Secured Tech Solutions now. A number of months ago, maybe about four to six months ago, Jerry Santin, our code enforcement official, discovered that there were some improvements that were being made to some of the buildings in the back of this area. And so upon further investigation, in speaking with the property owner or the representative, it was determined that they were in the process of renovating one of the buildings to have heavy truck repair. And so first, that would need a state design release in order to make those kind of improvements to the building itself. But also it raised a zoning issue as well in that the main parcel that you see on this exhibit is zone commercial neighborhood. And the type of use that they're doing would be something that would not be allowed in that zoning district. So in order to remedy that situation, they're seeking a rezone from commercial neighborhood to light industrial and are proposing some enhancements to the property out along Broadway. Secondly, the property that you see on this map, just to the east, the farmland is also owned by that same owner. And that actually has different zoning on it. It's a grandfathered zoning of business dash one, which is very similar to that commercial neighborhood zoning. So even though at this particular time, they don't anticipate doing any auto repair or storage on that additional farmland, they do want to go ahead and, their request is to get that rezone to light industrial as well, since they own both those properties. And then lastly, in addition to the auto, the heavy truck repair, we're talking dump trucks, very large commercial equipment that they're fixing out there. Obviously, they would like a space in the back to store those vehicles. And then they'd like to have the option to do semi-truck parking, both on this property and on the adjacent property, subject to putting in a fence with some slats. So that's an overview as to how this project came to be. And again, the formal public hearing would be at the planning commission on the 26th. So much like the last one, really looking for any particular comments that you might have as a council for them to consider or for the planning commission to look at carefully when they review the project as well. Thank you.
Is it gonna be similar to the property that shoots?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is it gonna be, is it gonna be similar to the property on 350 North by the airport?
I don't think so.
You don't think so? It's same size.
And let me introduce myself.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Chris Badger, and my office is at 9830 Michigan Road, Suite D, in Carmel, Indiana. And Mr. Singh is the owner, and they had a lot of grandfathered uses and probably wrong zoning uses on this property. And when Adam brought it up, oh, by the way, we did get the state release. And so they're coming in for a permit and, and we also designed those plans for them, and they're gonna be putting actual walls in and doing according to the, the correct design, let's put it that way. So, so the owner approached us, and when we talked with Adam, it made its sense to go ahead and add in the farm field as well. It's partially fenced. It's kind of around the residential area and around the the buildings on the east or the west side. But there's no fence really along the farm area and around the outside. There's a fence, but it's not theirs. I think it's more of the property to, further to the east. They currently have a driveway, which we're proposing to pave and add parking in front. We're gonna be redoing the office. If you look there, you'll see on the office. And we could go through some of the uses. There's vehicle repair, vehicle repair. We also have a stone cutter, which is, I think it's called just granite, but they cut granite there for countertops and whatnot. But then the other side has quite a bit of storage by one contractor. And then there's some vehicle repair, and again, more storage on the end. And then there's exterior storage. We're hoping to come up with a plan, and then we'd be bringing a development plan in front of you. But at this point, we kind of backed into it through the, the red flag on the permit. So we wanted to go ahead and get this taken care of so that we at least had the correct zoning on the parcel that we're doing the industrial work on. But we would like to coordinate with the expansion of Broadway and also give the right of way over for the expansion. We just need to have your engineers prepare the documents for the right of way release. They're also willing to put in the money for the, the multi-use path across there as well. The rest of it, we're just asking if we could coordinate if Broadway's gonna happen next year or this year. We don't want to put our asphalt in and then watch it get torn up. And the same thing with a lot of the rest of the stuff. We've got a development plan coming, and we don't, we don't want to put asphalt down and then come back in and cut it all up because we're putting in drainage structures, we're putting in a different route. It just hasn't been thought about. And really, I've posed the questions to the client. He'd like to do some layoffs, but it's too little premature, at least for us to throw it in front of you today. But we would like to delay the fence, which becomes an issue when we rezone. And there's a lot of building locations that may have setback issues, and we'd like that to be grandfathered. It doesn't make a lot of sense to go for a rezone and then have to move an existing building to meet a condition for the new zoning. But again, I think when we get to a point where we're really actually developing the property instead of just cleaning it up, that's our first response is we are going to clean it up. I think if anyone knows, there's a lot of dead trees. There's, and I told them also, we don't, if it's a, something we're not working on, it needs to be gone. So if it's something that's just sitting out there, and there are a few things that are just sitting out there, as we all know, some things you set down, and you had a good plan on picking it up, but it's still sitting there. So that was one of the things I asked him to add into the commitments, which was an overall, we're gonna remove all the dead trees, remove all the debris on the ground, and really just clean it up. Along with a facelift for the front, we're gonna add a new sign that would have all the tenants on it instead of just having one of the tenants on it. Also landscaping, we want to put in some landscaping that will beautify, especially as you come into Fortville. By the way, I'm also, I didn't want to reiterate, my father-in-law's been living here for years, so I guess I'm a transplant, right? But he lives down the road, and that's Don White. And so I've been in the, the community forever, and we always make jokes about your pink elephant, and we love it.
We make jokes about our beak.
Yeah, I love the community. I like the way it's going. I like the direction of Broadway being a, a really pedestrian friendly entry into the town. I like the way you guys are doing some things. I had some comments on the PUD, but I'm an engineer, so I've always been on the opposite side. And the ones through Carmel, wow, they're tough. And so I wouldn't say that you're, you're doing less by rezoning. I think there's a lot more control with a PUD, and so. But this isn't a good case for this one. I think light industrial is a good case. It also matches with your thoroughfare plan. So, and, and matches with your overall plan for the development. This was an industrial type area. And it, and we're willing to go one, oh, those, those, see how wide our drive is? One of the reasons is we have a large tree there. But we're willing to make that one way in, one way out, so we don't have, you know, multiple trails in. And we'd like to, at the time that you get towards there, we'd like a left turn from Broadway. I think the only thing we'd, we'd request if, if we were so able to do so. Any questions? I know that we, with you wanting to upgrade it, the home's gonna stay. There's a renter in there. He doesn't have anything to do with the rest of the facility. He's just renting that as well as the little boxt in backyard. And that's all got wood fence on it. At the time we do develop, we'll be before you guys again and get that approved, as well as all the setbacks. We do it with a development plan as well as drainage. All of this drainage goes to the west and then. through a series of ponds, it gets to a creek. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
You made a comment about Broadway and and not paving because of construction on Broadway.
But if it's going to be in five years or ten years, absolutely, we'll do it. It's just I would hate to to get our stuff done and two months later, guys out there marking with it a yellow line. Oh, we're going to cut all this out. We're like, okay.
Yeah, as far as I know, we're not doing anything down there, are we? That's on the other side.
Yeah, first, first to to be clear, this section of Broadway is unaffected by the indot project that's going through the downtown area. So however, to Joe's point, as part of the BP gas station, which by the way, one of the reasons that that hasn't opened up yet is because they haven't put in their entrance off of Broadway. And they also they have to do a little bit of widening on Broadway to make that center turn lane into the gas station. So bottom line is we would coordinate if the rezone is successful, we would coordinate all that. But it's not going to be the same level of improvements that you see in the downtown area here.
No, but I was looking at your, you had a a section through there, and since it's along Broadway, it did go to a median, which makes a nice left turn lane where you need it, as well as the multi-use path was a continuation on through. So that's why I said that whatever you guys need in terms of right of way off our property, I couldn't see it affecting any of the existing buildings and we wouldn't build anything. Except for I guess the the front office, when we do a remodel, it may require us to to do a little bit bigger on the front. But we have so much setback on that, that I showed a future setback. And typically, when we'd have a median section, we give ninety sixty per side or one hundred and twenty total. And then when I looked at the multi-use plan, it showed a hundred foot, so it'd be fifty foot. So my line there that shows approximate future right of way is a sixty foot off center line. So it would have plenty of room. You can see there's still room for the house and everything else without being too crowded. So if that were the case, that would probably be the edge of the multi-use path. But again, I would rather have Fortville's engineers tell me where it's going to be and do the actual property takes. But my client is willing to sign off on that. And if the multi-use path is going to get here for however many years, he's willing to either put the money in to the fund to do it or build it himself if it's if we know where the location is.
We do know, don't we? I mean, don't we? We can't, yeah. We definitely want to do that. I'm just glad they're going to do something because it's really looked bad for a long time, and it's right there at the entrance.
All that area is getting better, so.
Yeah.
And Mr. Singh has employed us to start to to look at that front. Kind of an unusual front to have two dormers and so on. I was talking to him about it. I said, I think we ought to redo the front. I can make it either look some type industrial, not so residential. And, you know, go some storefronts, something like that. But we'd have to build it out. And he was unaware when he hired a contractor to come in and do this. And when I went through that building, I'm really glad you guys looked at it because, yeah. So we we fixed that. We did get the state plan release, and I think he's got a permit request in, but we're waiting for, I think, the rezone to get the final approval on the permit because he would like to get it started.
Yeah, we've put that on hold basically pending the zoning situation. And then the last comment that I'd make too, that I failed to mention is even if they are successful at getting the rezone to light industrial under the ordinance, the B Z A would still need to grant a special exception to them in order to allow that use. Because it is allowed in light industrial, but only via special exception.
And that we're talking about the semis.
And then also, they have requested, there's about three development standards, variances that they're looking as part of the development. So the B Z A would have to weigh in on that too.
So is he considering making this where the current farmland is? Are they considering putting asphalt down out there or parking trucks out there?
I would say maybe futurely, I, at this time, like I said, there were so many different options that we gave him that until he picks one, but one of them was definitely to to park semis out there.
Is it truck repair they do or just?
It is semi repair, but.
Well, we don't, we don't want to pour up trucks sitting out there either.
No, no, and that's what.
And it needs to be hit. The other thing is, is our our library, when it gets built, is going to back right up to this. So we want this to look really nice over here too. Yeah. Yeah, yes.
Question, why the farmland would be getting rezoned if there's no particular plan of what to do with it? Because.
But I think that's, yeah, I think.
It's adjacent, so have to change one. It doesn't make sense to change your zoning.
If there's a possibility.
Yeah, B one, it's it's an old zoning, so it would have to be reclassified if we go to development plan anyway. I mean, that's not even an existing zoning.
I'd like to look at your location on three fifty north first before I make any decisions.
I don't think it's.
Yeah, well, because this has been looking really bad for ten years. And now you want to come in, say you're going to do all this, but how do we know you're going to do all this stuff that you're say you're going to do? Because, like I said, why didn't he clean this up ten years ago? It's it's looked really bad. And it's almost, I don't know, I get, I get when I do business with people, the shows what you know, ten years, he's had junk trucks and everything sitting out there, not, you know, just not really caring. And now when he's caught doing something that he shouldn't be doing, now he wants to do all these drawings and stuff. But what is to prove that you're going to even do all this? Because those trucks are still sitting out there.
Those are commitments made. I mean, we we gave a list of commitments as well as in those commitments are doing what's shown on the site plan.
Okay.
So if he says he's going to pave the front, my only concern with paving right off the bat was that if they were doing an expansion, there's nothing worse than seeing them do all this tie in and get all this done in four days later.
If they do, no, I'd rather see it done. Because it could be five years from now.
Exactly.
And we will fix that. They'll repave it at our cost or the indots cost to get it. Whatever's done out there will be redone.
Well, then I can, I can give you a guarantee that he'll get all of this done by four, too late in the summer. It'll be middle of summer for all this is completed, but he's already started hiring people to clean up. He's getting a tree company to come in and kill all the, not kill, but cut the dead trees.
Already done.
Yeah, exactly. And there's also like water, I I walk the property too, Fred. I know it's not.
Oh, I know. I've lived here twenty years and I.
And I'd be going by that same property all the time too. So but I think this, all I can give you is is a guarantee that I've got my client and what we've said we're going to do on this plan is what we're going to get done. I don't think at this time we'd want to, and one of the variances requesting is that at this time, we don't know what we're going to do. So I'm not, I don't want to pay back here to put trucks back there unless that's what we're going to do. And not only that, we want to go talk to the the city. And if it's a, if it's a no deal to do trucks, I don't want to go and present it in front of you guys and say, this is what we're going to do. And you guys are like, we hate trucks. We don't want to do this. It could be that we come back and do more of the small, light industrial type things where you have a plumber. You'd have a front storefront and you drive in and on the back, they'd have their trucks leaving. That may be an option. It's just, I don't think he's looked at everything. And I think because of what's happened, it's brought his attention back to the property instead of just letting it go. I mean, he doesn't come out here that often. He has quite a few other properties he watches. So I agree with you. He needs to show good faith. And by doing that, then if it's all done and we come back in with a development plan, you'll feel better about approving it because he did what he said he was going to do. So all I can say is that we've committed to it. We said that the rezone, that we're going to get everything done on the plan. We've asked if we could hold off on the fences until we get that development plan approval and know what we're going to do. So could be that he gets a zone, light industrial, and somebody else wants to buy it because it's light industrial and all this goes away. So that's kind of where, I don't know. I mean, the owner's got to figure out monetarily what's best for him. But getting its own light industrial is right now, my my recommendation to him was the best course for the property. You you have no other access for this property other than this parcel. And to have two different parcels with different zoning on by the same, you'd, I'd have to make easements through. It's it's just.
Well, I would, you know, I would rather him come, but it came just maybe another month or so. And then really got some really cleanup over there and got, you're asking me to.
I only got involved two months ago. And so all I can tell you, Fred, is that I, I just got involved two months ago. I made those commitments. I said, look, we've got to clean up the parcel. We have to do this. We have to do that. I want to get a new storefront on the front of that building so it looks commercial, doesn't look like it's, you know, partial house or something like that. And I think with my direction, I think he'll be doing those things and and get get you guys at least a, not a blemish on the entrance into Fortville. It'll be a, something everybody will see. Appreciate it because it's going to have landscaping. It's not, right now, it doesn't have a lot of street, you know, frontage. So it's, it's kind of hidden back there. And because it's been hidden, no one's really garden, gotten after it. And I think we, with my help, I've told them we need to get after it.
What I'm saying is when I own a property, I don't know how people get on after me. I keep it cleaned up.
How many properties do you own?
I have three or four.
Okay, you know, it can be, it can be the one that you, I meant to get to it, I'll get to it. And that's I'm sure what's happening here.
Me to mow my plant flowers. Nobody has to tell me.
Right.
Do it because I want to be a good neighbor.
He didn't develop this property this way. He bought it this way and
Yeah, ten years.
And didn't do anything with it. And I grant you that it's pretty much the same what it was ten years ago.
Yes.
To go, nobody told anybody to clean it up then, I'm assuming. So he bought a property and it's main, he's maintained it the way he bought it. So he is making improvements, it sounds like, so.
And he did mow, kept the front mowed. But you know, I'm not going to mince words. This will be done. You know, I'm I'm working with him now, and he's excited about the property and the things that he can do. And that that should make it a lot better.
Good.
Good question about the trucks, just so I understand, because I don't know anything about baseball. Don't know anything about this.
The only thing you guys had asked is what ages? I was going to stick my hand.
They were all the, all the different ages. Yeah. I played in the farm leagues and they were fun.
Could put a baseball field back here, I'm just saying. So the trucks, is it these trucks that are going to come in for repair? Are these trucks that are coming to?
So somebody throws a rod. They bring it in, they take the engine out, they'll fix the engine, put it back in and they go off.
Okay.
So if if somebody uses an oil change, that'd be something that they would do. It's not going to be structural. It's going to be new tires, those types of things. Probably some some work on on timings and things like that. I don't think so. And not only that.
More mechanical than it is body.
In that light industrial doesn't allow you to park wrecks out there if they're being serviced and they can show that they're currently serviced. I told him all the stuff that was just sitting out there needs to go. So if it's not one of these guys, pieces of equipment for them to have for their dump trucks or whatever, it needs to go. So and then the granite people have some things. They have trailers to pull the granite and bring it in. And then they have a couple of semis. But right now, that's, if we were going to change and go to all parking of trucks, trust me, it's going to be development plan in front of you guys. It's going to be shown what's going on. And we got to show that there's a need that we can get this thing filled because you don't want to build it and then say they will come. It was a good movie, but yeah, exactly. Come back to baseball.
Can you tell me how the buildings in the back are served with utilities?
We're going to get, just to let you know, Joe, there are two that have sanitary, and he's already committed to getting those changed. He was talking about, well, I already made a connection. I said, no, that's residential. So I'll put a new lateral up and it'll probably end in a manhole. I don't like the cleanup, cleanup, cleanup deal, so probably come back. There is a sanitary manhole right in the front yard. So I'll probably just bend it. And when we do a development plan, I'll I'll pull that sanitary line down the middle of the street because I want to lower it anyway. Seems like over the years, they put more gravel, more gravel, more gravel, and here's the finished floor. So it's.
I know the houses serve with water and sewer. I just didn't know the buildings in the back, so.
No, they have sanitary and they use well. And so we're, we're definitely get that fixed as well.
Do you be getting off of the well as well?
Yes, I think other than outside watering, but yeah, there's a lot of like washed water that then doesn't have to be. But I'll have, I'll, I'll get you definite. But I know that he already mentioned the Santers, so.
I'm just kind of curious about that. Would you oil changing and some of that stuff? Because that isn't our wellhead protection area. So I just want and make sure we don't have any open wells.
So that, yeah, they were going to do a fifty foot well. No, if you're a senior in Indianapolis, they have that huge. I just still don't understand that. But anyway. But no, and if there's any other guidance you want us to talk about, if there's some other, I don't know, to the south, there's any reason we'd, we'd need to push it all the way to the south. A lot of times, sometimes when you bring in sanitary, you have to bring it all the way to the other property. But in this case, I don't think we have any other buildings. And at this point, he hasn't told me he wanted to build more buildings. The only thing he's kind of hinted about was the, he he was looking for a truck. And then I said, well, do you understand what secure parking is? And he's like, not really. And I said, well, that would be that somebody lives in Fortville, has a truck, and he'd park it in there. We'd have lights and we'd have cameras and it would be fenced and it would be secure. You check in and check out, and he can drive home his car and park that in the neighborhood. And that's one of the good things about secure parking, and he didn't understand it very well. I'm trying to explain it. But that would be one option. But again, I don't want to throw that out there as that's why we're doing this because it was.
Sounds like you can do it right if you can convince him to do it right. That's the, yeah, that's.
If I find out the board and the city doesn't want it, I'm not going to recommend that we do parking. We'll go look for another, another use. For all I know, they, somebody would buy it, but their their whole facility here. It'd be a great property to do something like that. So it just had to do with the market.
Fritz had mentioned about that property at three fifty north in Hancock County, Incorporated County. Is it the same owner?
I don't, Rick, I don't think it is.
It's under the same LLC.
Oh, it is on the same.
Yeah, and he's got semis. It's the exact same acreage, like seven acres.
And he has one acres is out there.
It's got semi tractors parked out there, but.
If you give me your contact information, I'll go talk to him about it and get some pictures. I have not walked that.
Yeah, that's why I don't feel comfortable voting for this until I do. This is the first time I've seen it tonight.
Sure.
And that there's, there's farmland behind there that could be turned into residential someday. And I'm not sure, the track record, I'm sorry, but the track record of the owner does not doesn't say he's going to do this. It's all, if, if you do this, yes, this.
I think he's committed to this. I can tell you that right now because I've I've been there. And I also put it in the commitments. So legally, he is bound to do it. I mean, you could talk to your attorney, but if he puts a commitment on a rezone, it is.
It's just a lot of nodes. I'd like to. We have to check this out.
Not a problem. And I'll talk to him about that and we'll see what it looks like because I don't actually know what it looks like right now. I've been by there several times, but never, you know, it's different when you get out and walk it.
Right, me. Well, I'm all for making it better instead of it staying the same.
Yeah, the other option is we can come back in for a building permit on a, on a grandfathered piece of property and and ask for, you know, variances to all the other things that would be required, which would be ugly.
Yeah.
And and then we have a piece of property that's zoned with the old zoning code. And we don't, we would have to pick some relevant zoning. So no matter what, if we were to develop it, it would require to be rezoned. So.
Okay.
It's, I I know it's not necessarily palatable to help this guy, but I don't know if it's really helping him. It's more helping the community. For all I know, this comes up for auction, they somebody could buy it and come in and, like I said, put a whole facility. Or he comes in and puts in something that that if it's trucks, then he'll put it in. I I do a lot of work with big, big trucking companies and and when we do it, it's, it's clean. It's these guys come in, they check, they have a badge, there's all the vehicles are coded, and they go to a secure parking.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's if that's the way he goes, I can make sure it happens in a way that it's very professional, very clean.
I just feel more comfortable go checking out his other property on three fifty north.
I will do that and I'll get back with Adam on it, or you can get, I can give you a card of mine.
Okay.
That that sounds good.
For what it's worth, if the council would listen to the opinion, I am not in favor for semi overnight truck parking. There's always problems. There's always drugs, alcohol, noise, fights.
Yeah, I don't.
Unwanted people that come by there quite often. I've worked in another community that we had to go deal with one. And it's not usually favorable. So that's just my opinion, my two cents. Take it as you will.
It sounded, well, I I thought that was kind of Libby's question. It sounded like the only trucks that are going to be there for more than one day are trucks that are actively getting worked on, like they're up on a lift or something.
He just thought about proposals.
There's no proposal to do any of that. I understand. I understand his concern, um, but typically when you go to a secure parking lot, that's because somebody has $200,000 worth of TVs and he's gonna park there because he wants to make sure that nobody steals.
It should be secured parking, anything that you do out there.
They don't have a hang around spot. There's no bar.
Yeah.
You know, there's no place for them to hang out, but I follow you completely because I've been there as well. And I've been to places that I don't want to.
I'm pretty sure we won't allow them to sleep in our truck.
Well, just to let you know, when I sent Rachel over to get measurements, I also sent my son over because I was just wanting to make sure she was okay. And when you go to these places, you don't know. I mean, I, I always try to make sure and, and so I can validate that I understand what you're getting at. And there are places that even truck, I mean, even gas stations, as you know, all those truckers park there and all of those things happen as well. So this is a little different if you have actually secure parking. It's, it's not, you, you've dropped your vehicle off because you're driving home to get your, you know, because you can't in the subdivisions, park your semi there. So.
Thank you.
I'm ready to make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-four, three C.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I, I, I vote nay.
I, I, I oppose as well. I want to hear the information that Fritz asked for.
Okay, it's three to two, it passes. Oh, business, there is none. Joe, you're up next.
Evening, unless you've got something for me. I will, uh, let you know that I know the last meeting Fritz did ask about sweeping Madison. They did go up and sweep it by hand and use a shovel to pick up a lot of stone. The street sweeper we just had sent off to have it repaired. And when it came back, it's still not working. The conveyor is not working. So I believe they're supposed to be out tomorrow to work on it. We'll get them out as soon as they get that machine.
I apologize. I just got off the plane, so that pressure, so all I hear right now is, uh, cicadas. It's really super overwhelming right now. Yeah, it, uh, in the night, it's really, really bad, especially when I get off the plane. So, um, in the future, we, we're adding a lot of sidewalks. Um, I s- I see one in, uh, Yorktown where it has that big roller brush. Have you seen?
We've got one.
Okay, okay. If it's being repaired, you said?
No, it's the big street sweeper is being repaired. Yeah. They cleaned off the sidewalk and put it out on the curb, was gonna sweep it up and the machine wouldn't.
Right, okay. So, um, it seems like the sidewalks even on Broadway right now are really mad. I know they still got a lot more road construction, but I, we got time. That probably needs to be swept out because it's, it's, it's got a lot of, a lot of gravel on it. If you don't mind, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I'll take care of the front of my, my place, but I'm talking about some of those areas, nobody's gonna sweep them.
Right. We've actually got a resolution that, uh, requires the property owner to take care of the property within the right of way up to the curved edge sidewalk and the mowing and everything.
Yeah, the problem is that, that's a lot of sidewalks to some of those sidewalks. We'll see.
I think as long as it's under the contractor's control right now, we should be able to talk to them and they should be able to keep them cleaned off until they're, they're done.
I see in the future that something we're at the address, keeping sidewalks cleared off.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Adam, you got anything else for us?
No, I think you've heard enough from me tonight. Nothing from me, unless you have any questions, anything else.
Keith?
Keith's Parks Manager. I don't really have anything tonight other than I am waiting on the last two quotes for playground equipment. So as soon as I get everything put together in a presentation for you guys, I'll, I'll get it to you. So I got, uh, three for each site right now. I'm waiting on the fourth, so.
Great.
That's it.
It's exciting.
Questions for me.
Yeah, thank you.
Patrick?
I have nothing unless you have a question.
I don't have any.
I don't either.
Misty is not here. Alex, you have anything for us?
Pat and Adam, what's your everything?
Let's check on what we talked about. Yeah, yeah. Uh, public comment, anybody? Come on it, Brittany.
Brittany Layton, ten seventy-three West J Drive. Um, so we've started a foster adopt parent support group. Um, we're meeting on the first Mondays of the month over at New Life Christian Fellowship. They've been kind enough to host us. We are not affiliated with any religious organization. We are not affiliated with DCS. This is just a common, uh, gathering of people who have, uh, experienced, uh, foster care or adoptive care or kinship placements. Um, and just need some extra resources, some support, someone to talk to, share their journey with. Um, someone who might understand what they're going through to find some common ground. Um, it's once again at New Life Christian Fellowship, right off of State Road two thirty-four over close to the middle school. And if you have any questions, um, or interest, you can always email fortvillefosteradopt@gmail.com.
Thanks, Brittany. That's.
Thank you.
Nice. Good, good program there. Anybody else? Okay. Town Council comments? Libby?
I don't have anything.
Yeah, nothing else.
I have nothing.
And one comment, thanks, Joe, for putting up the twirly things on the, on the cross, on the crosswalk. I mean, I think it helps somewhat.
Yeah.
The, the cars stop a little bit now versus like not at all.
I think Fritz's point is on the cars.
Perhaps, I mean, that it's not a, it's not, you know, I don't know. There could be, I, I saw like a portable thing that's like, um, you know, basically solar powered. There are other things that could be done, I think, as it gets warmer and there's more traffic going around because of like farmer's market and stuff like that. We just might want to keep it in mind, but twirlys are better than no twirlys. So thank you. That's all I had.
Rich?
Uh, no, thank you. No, I don't need comment. Thank you.
I did want to tell Jerry thank you for initiating all that with that property because had he not done that, it wouldn't have never happened and it'd still be sitting there like it was. So kudos to him.
I will pass that along to him.
Okay. Sing, yeah, that was not him. That was the engineer. Yeah. I figured you knew that, but I just thought I'd say that. Yeah, that is who owns it. We don't know which one of which family, but there's a lot of them, so. I know there's a lot. That's okay. We can hear you. They shouldn't be working out there in that. I think that's gonna stay to whatever structure they keep that's there now. That probably would just be overflow parking, but I hope they don't do that at all, period. I mean, if they, they keep, and they probably won't have that many sitting there. If you're doing diesel mechanics, it's, it's a lot different than regular mechanics. So I can't see them piling up trucks out there for work. But let's hope that's not their intent to, to do over on that piece of property. And that's why I made a point to say that the library was gonna be, you know, there's, there's things that. Yes. It, and we talked about that. If there was an expansion after the library was built, that, that's a possibility that they could look at that piece of property. So yes, I mean, yeah, I hope that, you know, he would be willing to do that. But we'll, we'll just have to wait and see what they plan on doing at this point, it looks like. Yeah. Okay, so I need a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we need to sign those. They're right here. Yeah, they're right here. Yeah. I make a motion to adjourn at eight eleven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.